This meeting is called to order. In accordance with L B eight ninety-eight, a copy of the Open Meetings Law is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Welcome to the meeting of Monday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Let us all rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silent meditation. Please remain standing if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business as the Board of Equalization is to elect a chair, so I'll open the floor for nominations.
Chair Carlson, I would like to nominate yourself as Chair of the Board of Equalizations.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made in second. And any other nominations? Seeing none, we can proceed to a period of vote. Go ahead and please call the roll.
Washington.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Not available at the moment.
Beckus.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
The order of business for the Board of Equalization is as follows. Each year, the Lincoln City Council passes a number of improvement district ordinances. Today, we're here to equalize the assessments for several such districts: the Downtown Core Management Business Improvement District, Downtown Maintenance District, Downtown Management Business Improvement District, and West Haymarket Downtown Maintenance District. The land described in each one of the districts are benefited by the improvements in the districts. The costs of these services are paid by the city from its special assessment revolving fund. It is then necessary for the city to recoup its costs from the benefited properties and reimburse its revolving funds. These costs or assessments are computed by the Urban Development Department and presented to the city for its review when sitting as a Board of Equalization, as we are now. The clerk will please read a description of each district individually from agenda. After the district is read, a representative from the Urban Development Department will come forward to make a brief statement about the district. Then, anyone wishing to testify may come forward. We ask that if you do come forward, please state your name and sign the sheet at the podium. Please state your name and address before making your comments. Madam Clerk, please read the first item.
Okay. I will read the districts into the record. Downtown Core Management Business Improvement District, generally bounded by N Street on the south and Pinnacle Arena Drive on the west, thence north and northeasterly along Pinnacle Arena Drive to Eighth Street, then south along Eighth Street to S Street, thence east along South Street to Ninth Street, then south along Ninth Street to Q Street, thence east along Q Street to Tenth Street, thence north along Tenth Street to a point approximately mid-block between Q Street and R Street, thence east along said mid-block point to Fourteenth Street, then south along Fourteenth Street to Q Street, thence east along Q Street to Centennial Mall, then south along Centennial Mall to M Street, thence west along M Street to Thirteenth Street, then south along Thirteenth Street to L Street, thence west along L Street to Twelfth Street, thence north along Twelfth Street to M Street, thence west along M Street to Ninth Street, thence north along Ninth Street to N Street, thence west along N Street to Pinnacle Arena Drive. Downtown Maintenance District, aligned beginning at the intersection of K Street and South Twenty-first Street and extending west along the central line of K Street to South Thirteenth Street, then north along South Thirteenth Street to the central line of L Street, and west along the central line of L Street to the central line of South Twelfth Street, then north along the central line of South Twelfth Street to the south right-of-way line of M Street, then west along the south right-of-way line of M Street to the west right-of-way line to Eighth Street, then north along the west right-of-way line of Eighth Street to the north right-of-way line to the east-west alley between O and N Streets, then west along the north right-of-way line of the north right-of-way line of the east-west alley between N and O Streets to the west property line of Lot One, Augustine Subdivision, City of Lincoln Lancaster County, Nebraska, then north along the west property line of Lot One, Augustine's addition to the south right-of-way line of O Street, then west to the north-south alley between Canopy Street and Eighth Street and running from O Street to P Street, and continuing north along the west right-of-way line of Seventh Street to R Street, then east along the north right-of-way line of R Street but excluding the properties adjacent to the north side of R Street to the east right-of-way line of Tenth Street, then south to the north right-of-way line of Q Street, then east along the north right-of-way line of Q Street to the center line of Nineteenth Street, including all parcels adjacent to the north right-of-way line of Q Street except those parcels lying east of Fourteenth Street, then south along the center line of Nineteenth Street to the center line of P Street, then east along the center line of P Street to the center line of Twenty-first Street and N Street, and then south along the east right-of-way line of Twenty-first Street to the center line of K Street, exterior boundary area, as well as those parcels abutting South Thirteenth Street between K Street and Lincoln Mall, and those parcels abutting the east side of South Twenty-first Street between N Street and K Street. Downtown Management Business Improvement District, those properties within and were specifically stated abutting the area defined by an area bounded by the north side of K Street from Twenty-first Street to Fourteenth Street, then south along the west side of Fourteenth Street to Lincoln Mall, then along Lincoln Mall from Fourteenth Street to Tenth Street, including those parcels adjacent to the south side of Lincoln Mall between Fourteenth Street and Tenth Street, the north along the east side of Tenth Street to K Street, and the west along the north side of K Street to Eighth Street, the north along the east side of Eighth Street to N Street, then west along the north side of N Street to Pinnacle Arena Drive, the north along the east side of Pinnacle Arena Drive and following said street as it bends in northeasterly direction until it intersects with Eighth Street, then south along Eighth Street to South Street and including the parcels adjacent to Eighth Street on the east, then east along South S Street, excuse me, then east along S Street to Ninth Street, then south along Ninth Street to R Street and including the parcels adjacent to Ninth Street on the east, then east along the south side of R Street to Tenth Street, then south along the west side of Tenth Street to Q Street, then east along Q Street to Nineteenth Street and including those parcels abutting the north side of Q Street between Tenth Street and Fourteenth Streets, as well as those abutting the north side of Q Street between Seventeenth Street and Nineteenth Street, then south along the west side of Nineteenth Street to P Street, then east along the south line of P Street to the Twenty-first Street, then south along Twenty-first Street from P Street to K Street, including those parcels adjacent to the east side of Twenty-first Street between P Street and K Street. West Haymarket Downtown Maintenance District, generally located along the west line of Outlot C, West Haymarket Addition from approximately K Street on the north, excuse me, K Street on the south, north to N Street, and continuing north along the center line of Pinnacle Arena Drive to approximately Ninth and Tenth Streets, then south to R Street, thence west to Seventh Street, then south to O Street, thence east to Eighth Street, then south to the alley south of N Street, thence west to the east line of Outlot C, West Haymarket Addition.
Woo-hoo.
Nice job, Sonny.
Yes.
All right. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Ron Kane with the Urban Development Department. The proposed assessments before you this evening are based on expenditures incurred between September one of two thousand and twenty-four and August thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-five. The Downtown Maintenance District and the West Haymarket Maintenance District assessment are based on street frontage, whereas the Downtown Management and the Core Districts are both based on property evaluations as determined by the county assessor. And I'm here to try and answer any questions you may have regarding these assessments.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that would like to testify? So please come forward now on this particular issue. Seeing none? Is there a motion?
I would make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second by Beckus. Discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Beckus.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero.
All right. That ends the voting session.
Chair Carlson, I would move adjournment.
Right. Sign can.
Motion's been made in second. To adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We are adjourning the Board of Equalization. Now, welcome to the Second Act. Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please be advised, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chambers by the northwest door. The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public addressed in the council to identify themselves, the name of any organization represented by such person, and their address, unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Each speaker should state whether they are speaking in favor of or in opposition to an item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. Anyone wishing to speak on an item on the agenda shall come forward after the clerk reads that item and the applicant has presented. After public comments, the applicant may make one short rebuttal. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Monday of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of council to proceed unimpeded. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for our City Council meeting is a reminder that due to the Thanksgiving holiday, City Council will not meet on December first. Next on the agenda would be our consent agenda, Sections one, two, and Sections three.
All right. Are there any presentations on the consent agenda? Are there any members of the public that would like to discuss anything on the consent agenda? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, we can proceed.
We cannot vote on these items. Item one A is reappointing Adele Burke, Guadalupe Escaval, Brooke Im, Leanne Panteron, and Patricia Shepherd to the Commission on Women and Gender for Terms to expire November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-eight, introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Sign can.
Second by Weber. Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beckus.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item one B is approving the distribution of funds representing interest earnings on short-term investments of idle funds during the month ended September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Sign can.
Second by Weber. Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Schob.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Beckus.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item two A was introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Washington, I think, first. Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Duden.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Beckus.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. That concludes our consent agenda. We shall move on to Section four, Public Hearing Liquor Resolutions. I'll call items four A and four B together. Item four A and B is application of the night-before LLC doing business as The Night-Before Lounge for a Class C liquor license located at ten thirty-five M Street and a related manager application of Janon Thomas.
All right. It's an applicant here. Please come forward. Yeah. Yeah, either side, and go ahead and state your name and address first, and tell us about your application.
My name is Steve Stevenson, and I live at eighty-one oh seven Patrick Avenue here in Lincoln.
All right. And can you tell us about your application?
Yeah, so really, I'm here for the change of corporate ownership. So I had one member buy out another member.
All right. Counsel, any questions? Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, sure.
Oh, okay.
So you're good.
Yeah. All good.
All right. Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on item four A or four B? Please come forward now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
I'll call item four C and four D together. Item four C and D is application of Kripa Indian Cuisine, Inc., doing business as Kripa Indian and Nepali Cuisine for the Class C liquor license located at eighty-three twenty Northwoods Drive, Suite one hundred, and a related manager application of Bishal Padel.
All right. Is the applicant here?
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Bishal Padel. I'm the manager or owner of the business of Kripa Indian and Nepali Cuisine, address of eighty-three twenty Northwoods Drive. So I've applied the license. It's been a long time, maybe the four or five months now, and we're expecting to, we will get the license soon. If you have any questions, if there's any issues, you can ask me the questions, and I will try to give you answers. I don't have any question from my side so far. Thank you.
Counsel, questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Oh, you do? I'm sorry. I thought you said no. Sorry.
I know. I just wanted to thank you for bringing your application forward. Are you open for business yet?
Yes, we are still open.
Where are you located?
Eighty-three twenty Northwoods Drive, Suite one hundred.
And congratulations on a super clean application.
Thank you so much.
And his food's amazing, by the way. It's really good.
You are. Thank you. Any other questions so far?
Any other questions, counsel?
So this is the first time I'm attending the hearing, so I'm still confused what to ask, and if you would ask me a question, that would be comfortable for me. And if you guys let me know what I have to do it, I would try to do it.
I'm sorry, Tom. Did you bring any menus with you?
I don't, I don't have a menu so far, sir. So if you search our business into Google, thank you, sir. So it's available online. If you would search it on the Google.
No real questions from us.
Thank you so much.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Is there any members of the public that would like to comment on item four B, or excuse me, four C, four D? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chair, seeing no one else coming forward, I'd like to make a motion to deny items four A and four B.
Sign can.
Second by Weber. Discussion. Seeing none? Please call the roll.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Beckus.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items four C and four D.
Second?
Second.
Second by Washington. Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Schob.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Beckus.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. That concludes Section four. We shall move on to Section five, Public Hearing Resolutions. I'll call item five A. Item five A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for October sixteenth through October thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five.
All right. Is there anyone that would like to discuss new impending claims against the city? If so, please come forward now. All right, great.
Hello, Heather Sullivan, nineteen thirty-Fulquess Boulevard. I received a letter from the county attorney denying my claim, and would like you guys to reconsider the denial.
Is there any questions?
I did email you guys. I think Heather.
I'm trying to go a little fast.
I'm sorry. Heather Sullivan.
Heather Sullivan.
Heather Sullivan. I emailed you, the council, I think, last week as well. Asking that you reconsider the denial from this county attorney against my claim.
Just, the councilman chair, I'm sorry, thank you. Just so that you can bring us and folks who are here up to speed, would you talk a little bit about your claim?
Yes. Back in July twenty-third of this year, LPD was called to one of my rental properties for a gentleman that was there. I'm not for sure what he was trying to do or whatever. Anyway, they ended up arresting him, in the meantime, damaged the garage door at the property. So I'm asking for reimbursement to repair the garage door, actually replace it. It's irreparable at this point.
Counselman Duden.
Twain, how it got broken?
Um, I wasn't at the property at the time, but from what I understand, there was one officer talking to the gentleman that was at the property that's not belonged to or associated with the property. He was, the person was non-compliant. A second officer came into the picture and was very aggressive in his tone, or what I understand, very aggressive in his tone, very authoritative, authoritative, authoritarian, anyway.
We got that.
Yes, yes. Anyway, sorry. But I guess the gentleman approached, maybe in compliance or tried to be compliant with the officers, and they actually slammed him up against the garage door and then arrested him. I do have a statement from a neighbor that witnessed everything as well.
Right.
Was, I'm sorry, I'm still trying to piece together, the person who was arrested.
Yes.
Was the guest of?
No, it was an independent person. There's no association with the home. There's not a guest, there's not a residence or anything like that. But he was been at the property at other times. I think that he was an individual that was associated with a house or a person that lived at the house many, many years ago. I think that he still assumes this individual lives there or is at the home, which he's been told several times, by understanding that this person's not there. That he was there again visiting or attempting to visit, and he was arrested subsequently. He did not enter the home or do any damage to the home himself. It was during the arrest procedure, the damage was done.
Thank you.
He did.
Where we going, Counselman Duden?
Thank you, Chair. Was this person unauthorized to be there?
There was no order against him not being, you know, he, I mean, it's.
You hadn't issued him a letter for trespassing?
No, no, sir. No.
And you didn't see the altercation that took place?
I did not, no. I do have a statement from the neighbor that witnessed everything from across the street. I provided that in my email. I also have a copy of it here with me tonight. It was provided to the county attorney as well.
I would like some assistance from legal counsel, please. Thank you. I'm gonna ask our attorney some questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Abby Latrell, City Attorney's Office, five-five-five, South Tenth Street.
Ms. Latrell, thanks for coming forward. Many of the things we see from residents of our community that come to this claims are addressed in the Civil Claims Tort Act. This one addresses the actions of a law enforcement officer in the course of their duties. Does the Tort Act also cover this? And would you explain to me, is there a difference?
Yes, this claim is filed under the political subdivision Tort Claims Act, and the city is immune from liability for conduct that is exercised in due care by law enforcement officers. So in this case, the evidence that we were able to review demonstrated that this officer was affecting an arrest. It's unfortunate, this person who was arrested was not associated with the, with the home, but they were evading police officers and then resisting being arrested, and the officer took them into custody. In the course of that, made contact with this garage door.
I'm still just a little, this is covered under the Tort Act, and this was in the process of doing their job. So does the homeowner have any other recourse at this point?
Under the political subdivision Tort Claims Act, the homeowner can, or the claimant can always file a lawsuit if a claim is denied.
I understand. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think Mr. Weber has.
Yeah. Counselman. Thank you, Chair Carlson. Thank you, Ms. Latrell. You just spoke about the recourse that the homeowner would have, you know, under the political subdivision Tort Act. Are there other areas of recourse, you know, with the individual who is not an agent of the city that the homeowner could potentially explore?
So I can't offer legal advice on other remedies that might be available to her, but she could certainly consult a private attorney.
Okay. And then, can you speak, you know, you talked about the evidence indicates that there was due care. Can you speak a little bit more about what the evidence indicates, and especially as it relates to like the apprehension of the individual, or at least when it made contact with the garage?
So I can only report what was provided to me with, from LPD, and I don't know, I thought someone from LPD would be here to.
Heather is, over your left shoulder.
Yeah. So perhaps someone from LPD could talk more about specifically what happened at their nearest.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Good afternoon. Ryan Dale, Assistant Chief, Lincoln Police Department, five-seventy-five South Tenth Street. I did have a chance to review this case earlier this afternoon. I read the complaint filed by Ms. Sullivan along with the letter that she referenced from the neighbor across the street. I also reviewed body camera footage from both police officers involved, and then there was an in-car camera from one of the officers. And basically, what I saw was that the initial responding officer was responding to call at the house where someone had called saying that there was someone trying to get in the house. That person left on foot while the officer was responding, but he located him a couple blocks away on foot, got out of his cruiser, attempted to make contact, gave many commands for the person to stop, which he refused to do, continued to walk away. The officer followed him on foot for a couple blocks, and then retreated to his car and followed him with his car several more blocks, and the party ended up returning to the same house again and went to the front door. The officer continued this entire time to give him numerous commands, and also during this time was making radio transmissions so other officers were aware of this person refusing to stop and comply with his orders and what their location was. So then the second officer arrived, having received that information on the radio, and at the time, then they had two officers. They attempted to place the gentleman in custody. He resisted by tensing up and pulling away. They were standing next to the garage door when that transpired, and they did push him like against the garage door so he can move around as much as they took him into custody. And I guess I should mention, from the time that the first officer made contact with him or attempted to and started giving him orders to the time that they took him to custody, about five minutes and thirteen seconds had passed.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Counselman Duden.
Chief, can you tell us what he was charged with?
He was charged with, there were three charges, disturbing the peace, resisting arrest, and I don't recall the third.
Didn't comply with lawful order?
Probably. I don't, I don't remember, I don't remember for sure, but that would fit.
Okay, all right. But not charged with vandalism, though?
No, I don't believe so. Any other questions for me?
Other questions, counsel?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Other questions, counsel? Is there anyone else that would like to discuss claims against the city? If so, please come forward now. If so, please come forward now. Welcome, and there's microphones on either side there.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm really nervous.
Oh, that's all right. Go ahead and start with your name and address.
My name is Joe Polke and my mailing address is 2121 North 27th Street. And I don't have a cell phone yet.
Say that again, sorry.
I don't have a cell phone yet.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Okay. I was in Lancaster County Jail and I asked, I asked the judge if I could get on a PR bond. The judge went and said the only way would be with a treatment bond. So March 5th, yeah, March 5th, I went to the bridge. I graduated. October 14th, I'm a youth celebrating alcohol. After, after I graduated, May 6th, I had to go back to jail to finish out my sins. In which, when I went to jail, the only thing I had was just clothes on my back. So the treatment center loaded me up with clothes, I mean, loaded me up. They had, they had a running club on Wednesdays and Fridays and they gave me two, two brand-new pairs of running shoes. And so I did, I ran on Wednesdays and Fridays. Well, come May 6th, when I graduated, I was supposed to go back, I was moving in with a friend of mine, Richard, and while I was in treatment, in the course of it, he got us evicted. I didn't know about it. So when I graduated treatment, I was given a ride to our apartment. Well, lo and behold, there was eviction notices on the door and they says, "We're so sorry, we're gonna have to take you back to jail, sit out your time." You know, there's nothing I could do about it, so sat out my time. They released me at 5:01 and I was in the release lobby. I didn't get out until about 10 after 2:00 PM, October 6th. There was three COs that looked for all my property and they just looked at me and they just said, "Well, it's not here, it's lost." And I was really upset. So I went back, October 16th, to make sure maybe they misplaced it somewhere and all my stuff was in those double bag, like in those big black yard bags, those leaf bags. That's, I mean, something you just cannot miss. And I talked to CO Christensen and a sergeant on October 16th and I know CO Christensen pretty good. And he says, "Joe, he says, "We're sorry, your stuff is lost." So I filed a tort claim. They gave me all the list of my property, three pages, and I made copies of this. I sent a copy, and I don't know who to send it to, so I just went out on a whim. I sent it to ombudsman, the mayor, and the public defender who defended me. And public defender says, "Well, we don't do anything." Ombudsman says, "There's nothing we can do." And the mayor's secretary said, "Well, what can she do?" And I says, "I just want her to have a copy of it to be aware of it." So I wrote everything down, what it was, prices. And the total was $5,210.50. The reason being is that on my property, I had engagement rings and my utmost intention was to ask love of my wife to marry me on Thanksgiving this, this coming week.
And that is five, five minutes, which is our time limit here. If you want to wrap up with one or two sentences, that's fine here too.
Sure, so I went back last week to the jail. Chad Miller, head of property, he says, "We found your stuff somehow, it got sent back to the bridge." So I looked all through it, I have 80% of it except for the stuff that is not marked.
Counsel, do we have questions?
I have one question.
Counsel.
Thank you, Chair Carlson. Mr. Polke?
Yeah, close.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
You were in the Lancaster County Jail?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and who, how did you end up at the Lancaster County Jail? Did the Lincoln Police Department take you there?
Right.
And then when you got to the jail, who did you, when you, when they, you know, take your things, who did you sign your, your items over to?
Well, to the, to the jail.
To Lancaster County?
Right.
Okay, all right.
But what they told me is they says, "Well, it's the city of Lincoln." You know, I'd have to, for a tort claim, I'd have to go through the city of Lincoln, like through here, you folks.
Okay. I'm not, I don't know that that's necessarily true, but I appreciate that they told you that.
Well, they just told me I need to file a tort claim and I'm assuming it's with the city of Lincoln.
Counselman Duden.
That's exactly what I did.
So isn't it called the Lancaster County Jail?
Lancaster County Department of Corrections, to be exact.
So it doesn't say the Lincoln Corrections?
Excuse me?
It doesn't say Lincoln Corrections?
No, no, Lancaster County Department of Corrections. My bad.
We can ask our attorney.
Counselman Bowers.
First of all, I want to commend you on your sobriety. Battling a demon that most people don't understand the struggle of what you've been through, so.
It's Satan, dude.
Good for you, and one day at a time, so.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, so you got, you said that 80% of your stuff was transferred back from the jail back to the bridge?
They said, "Here's your stuff," but I looked through it and only 80% of it was there. What wasn't there is the stuff that is not marked off.
When you were taken in, did they do an inventory of your property? Like, did they do a sheet that, because, so I used to work at the bridge, right? And we would do an inventory of everyone's property that would come in and mark it out. Did they do, so that came, that's their records then?
They have copies and this is my copy.
Can I see what you have?
Can I have your stuff for you?
If you want to hand it to one of the clerks.
And the stuff that is marked off is the stuff that was in the big two black bags.
Do you mind if I just take two seconds to?
No, go for it.
Okay, thanks.
Why don't we just show it on the monitor?
Oh, yeah, that's. Counselman Duden for the win.
Just a question.
I'm so nervous.
No, no, that's not, that's not on you, Joe.
Yeah, it is, I'm sweating.
Just people like you.
I've never done this tort claim thing ever in my life.
Okay, so this is your property receipt. When you received this stuff back, you received it from the bridge. So Lancaster County Corrections sent your property from their facility to the bridge, correct?
Right.
And then you received this from the bridge and the bridge, did they go through this with you?
The bridge sent it back to the jail. I just happened to last week go there because I wanted CO Christensen to sign a paper stating, "I, CO Christensen, talked with Joe and the Lancaster County Department of Corrections had lost, but he wasn't there." That's when Chad Miller come and he's the head of the property. He says, "Oh, well, here's your stuff, it got sent back to the bridge and the bridge sent it back to the jail." And he just, he just opened the door and he said, "Here, I gotta go."
Yeah. When you, and you mentioned this in your story, but just to be clear, when you were taken in, were you staying at the bridge or are you staying in a different place?
During treatment?
Yeah, so like you said, when you were taken into Lancaster County Jail.
First contact.
First contact, you went from the bridge to Lancaster County Jail, right?
I went. You're losing.
Where were you when you went to Lancaster County Jail for the first time?
Yeah.
At your apartment?
Oh, when I got, when I graduated.
And when you were first detained?
First detained, I was at the jail. And the judge Zimmerman said, "The only way I'll let you out on a PR bond is a treatment bond."
But like, where were you living at right before you went to jail?
I was going through the process of getting mailing address and everything switched over to my friend's apartment.
So you were not staying at the bridge?
No, 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 no.
No, okay.
No.
You went there in the middle.
Yeah, okay. And I totally understand, you know, I'm, I'm not entirely sure on the difference, you know, if this would be a Lancaster County thing or if it's a city of Lincoln thing. But you know, I totally get, you know, how that's confusing, especially for, you know, the everyday person. You know, Lincoln and Lancaster tend to be, tend to be the same thing, so I really do appreciate you coming out. I'm sympathetic, I really am, I mean, you have a property receipt that has things listed. You know, my hiccup is what was received back and what was not received back. I just need to think for a little bit. Can you show me the other, so I see that the rings weren't returned according to you, the black shoes, white socks, coat jeans. Can you show us the other sheet that you have?
Okay, this is sheet two. This is sheet one.
And so with your debit cards, you know, you have on there 225?
I canceled them.
How did you come up with a total of like 450 then for, because I mean?
I know that, I know what was on there when I left jail to go to treatment.
Okay, and you're saying that there was no money left in those accounts then?
There was money left, there was money there, I closed it. I just forgot to mark it off.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Because I was short on time.
Gotcha, gotcha. So that would actually then be zero?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, then can I see your last sheet, please?
This is sheet number three.
Okay.
I didn't get the time to re-figure.
Yep, right. Okay, so everything on this sheet was, I'm sorry. Okay, so everything on this sheet was returned to you on the, I swear I'm going somewhere this. Can you put up the first sheet and the second sheet next to each other?
What's blacked out is what I have.
That's perfect, okay, so.
Not blacked out is.
There's the ID, there's about $4 and some changing coins, two rings, and then two StarChang wallets, two more rings.
These StarChang bus passes.
Bus passes, okay. Black shoes, white socks, coat, jeans, shoes, shoes, so I'm seeing.
And obviously, these, these are not tort.
Right.
And the bridge gave, gave those to me brand-new.
Okay, so outside of the rings, I'm seeing three pairs of shoes, a pair of socks, a pair of jeans, and two coats.
Right. The brown, the brown coat, or the brown hood for the coat, that was 40 bucks. That comes separately, well, it was separately in the package anyways.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Someone else might have more questions.
Counselman Beck, yes.
Actually, I'm, I have a question for City Law, please.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Oh, I'm done.
Yep.
Y'all have a nice Thanksgiving now.
Well, hang on, you. Hang on for a moment, but, but you can have a seat. Thank you. Luttrell, thank you.
Yes, Abby Luttrell, Law Department.
Could you please explain why the claim was denied?
This claim was denied because the city was not involved in the harm that he says he suffered. So the receipt that was presented to our office and was shown to you here was from Lancaster County Corrections, which is a different political subdivision than the city of Lincoln. So we can't compensate someone for damage that occurred by someone who's not under the city of Lincoln's control.
Thank you, Ms. Luttrell, that's all my questions, thank you, Chair.
Counselwoman Washington.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Luttrell, I know that you work for the city of Lincoln Law Department, but humor me for just a moment. Do you know if the Tort Claims Act covers the subdivision of the county?
Yes, it does. And that process, I don't happen to know where a claim is filed against the county, but I think it's probably Google-able.
Okay, thank you.
Counselman Bowers.
So to follow the process, going to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners would be the best place for him to go then, to file that within Lancaster County then?
So I can say in Lincoln, it's required that you file with the city clerk or the city attorney's office. That's where you file your initial claim and then it's considered by you at the city council after a recommendation. I don't know exactly where the Tort Claims Act says to file against the county. It may be the county clerk's office, it may be the county attorney, that would be something that the claimant would need to research.
Gotcha. So what I'm hearing you say is that the county clerk, if he chose to pursue this further, would be the, a good place to go?
You, you may be able to visit them and ask where to file a claim. And the statute of limitations is the same for each political subdivision, so if you're within one year, you're still within time to file a claim.
Other questions, counsel?
Thank you very much.
Are there other folks that would like to address pending claims against the city? If so, please come forward now.
My name is Tyrese Howard, Adaba Sawa in the United States of America. For some reason, I made a couple calls to dispatch. But far as my evidence goes, this is all they have for my evidence, is just, just showing that dispatch came up, but they don't have any of my statements. And I was wondering why I don't have the statements, because for me to go to court, I have to have evidence.
And is this a, a claim against the city?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Or that was, did you receive a, a letter from the county attorney, or excuse me, from the city attorney's office?
I haven't been getting back, no one's has been getting back to me at all, but now it's just been, their silence has been acquiesced and so whatnot and for me to be able.
Excuse me, sir, can you repeat your name?
That's Tyrese Howard.
Tyrese Howard.
Tyrese Howard.
Yeah, like I said, no one's getting back to me or whatnot, they're just acting like I don't exist, just kind of like when I made my report and called them out there, they don't, it seems like they don't make reports for people that look like me because I called them out a couple of different times and on the report it says, "Mr. Lane and some others."
Yeah, right, right now, we're, we're addressing claims against the city and so that there's another process. So I'd suggest probably, like what we just heard, you probably need to contact the city attorney's office too and go through that formal process.
Okay, yeah, I did contact them, yeah. But I would just, like I said, my, my question was just, how come my, when I called them out, how come they're not making their reports?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I have no more information than you have here too and so my, my recommendation would be for you to, to move forward, to go contact the city attorney's office if you want to make a claim.
Okay, yeah, okay, well, I'm, I'm saving my time, I'll be back to open mic or whatnot because it was just a city thing or whatnot, I got some other stuff to talk about as well.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll be back though.
Appreciate it, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment on new impending claims against the city?
Hey, Justin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Just being mindful, so I know that with Joe, like, his cases within the county and so I know that we have sort of a list of other stuff. Joe, if you want to stick around, the reason I asked for the list of things is I'm going to give you a list of some organizations that might be able to at least get you back the, you know, if you don't have a coat for winter or jeans or socks or whatever, I'm sure I can get you an organization that might be able to hook you up. So even if this isn't the proper venue, and I recognize that this isn't Lancaster County, this is the city of Lincoln, there's a couple of numbers I want to give you for, that might be able to hook you up with another jacket then for the winter, okay?
First woman I've filed.
Yep, and I'll come and talk to you in a little bit, okay?
Like a recess?
We'll just go forward, and I'll.
Is there anyone else that would like to address new impending claims against the city? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
I'll call item five B, approving the interlocal agreement between the city of Lincoln and the city of Lincoln Lancaster County Railroad Transportation Safety District for funding and administrative responsibilities for the final design services right-of-way construction and engineering services for Thirty-Third Street and Cornhusker Highway Project.
Welcome, Director.
Good evening. Elizabeth Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation Utilities, five-five-five South Tenth Street. This interlocal is between the city and the Railroad Transportation Safety District, and essentially, to make it quick and easy, it outlines the financial responsibilities. Ultimately, RTSD is providing the local match, the city is contributing one point five percent of Lincoln on the Move also as part of local match, and then we had received a, a large federal grant for this project. So this just confirms and outlines those responsibilities. Happy to answer any questions on this one. The next one that will come up is also interrelated with this, so.
Council, any questions on this first one? Councilwoman Shub.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna push the microphone button, that'll help, right? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Elliott, thanks for coming forward. I have been out in the community and had a few conversations with residents about this, and they saw the item on the agenda. This is just citing an agreement to authorize someone else to help us continue to move forward with the project, right?
Essentially, yes, exactly. This just outlines, so it's clear for everyone who has what responsibilities. This one is the financial aspect, the next one is the programming between NDOT and the city that then outlines basically who's responsible for what when it comes to the actual work. So yes, this one is the financial responsibilities.
The public will get a chance to address other issues as the process moves forward?
Yes, we will continue to have open house. Our last open house on this was about eight months ago, give or take, I don't remind me, but once we get through this and continue with design, we are in the process of doing a final contract for final design. Once we have that and get that consultant on board, there'll be additional public engagement and outreach for that, those last design efforts, and then construction is looking, I'd have to go to the project page, but roughly twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight, starting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Council, other questions? Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
I'll read item five C, approving the LPA program agreement between the city of Lincoln and the state of Nebraska Department of Transportation for the use of federal funds for final design services right-of-way construction and construction engineering services for the Thirty-Third Street and Cornhusker Highway Project.
Thank you again, Liz Elliott. This one is also part of the Thirty-Third and Cornhusker, this one delineates the responsibilities between Nebraska Department of Transportation and the city of Lincoln. Basically, it's the, it also mentions the financial commitment as well in this one. Again, just making sure all roles and responsibilities are clear. This is very similar to our other agreements with NDOT on federal projects, just outlining different partners on this one.
Council, any questions? Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on item five C? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, please proceed.
I'll call item five D, approving the Amendment One to Contract Between the City of Lincoln and Spare Labs, Inc. for ADA-compliant paratransit and on-demand scheduling software to add additional scheduling software services.
All right. I'm back. I promise, this is the last one for today. So this is a contract amendment with a program that we already utilize for our paratransit and on-demand. This is not an increase in, or change cost in any way. They have a new service that allows for some answering service assistance that we can use that will help better serve our customers who can call in off-hours, you don't have to have a dispatcher, they don't have to sit on hold, because we get a lot of call volumes during heavy peak hours, this allows them to hopefully get their information and not have to sit on hold longer. So our hope is that this service will provide better customer service. If it doesn't work out, we don't like it, we won't renew it, but we wanted to give this a shot to see if we could continue to improve level of service.
Council, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there any member of the public that would like to comment? If so, please come forward now on five D. Seeing none, please proceed.
I'll call item five E, approving the Articles of Dissolution for the Lincoln Lancaster County EMS Oversight Authority, Inc.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Chris Connolly, City Law Department, five-fifty-five South Tenth Street. We came to you several months ago with some changes to Title VII dealing with ambulance service, and as part of that, we talked about the dissolution of MSOA as we move forward and, and sort of reorganize the way that service is being provided. And so as part of that step, we are asking the Council to approve the Articles of Dissolution and the, the plan of dissolution that are attached to the resolution. It's, it's, this is a result of language in the bylaws that talks about how the city council is supposed to approve any amendments at all to the Articles of Incorporation for the corporation itself. And so with the dissolution, we consider that enough of an amendment that warrants approval. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Council, any questions?
I do.
Councilwoman Washington.
I remember the conversation, thank you for coming back and bringing this to us, but in reading through that, I just wanted to make certain it said that the dissolution would happen, but we would also take care of any outstanding creditors and remaining assets. So are there any outstanding creditors?
There, well, there's ongoing expenses that are still happening.
Okay.
And to the extent that those are creditors, yes, and, and we do expect that there will be enough money to pay for them through the, the final winding up process of the corporation.
Okay. And will that zero it out, or will there be some?
We expect there to be a little bit left over, but it's indicated there is about eight thousand. It'll depend on what really, when we get to the final end, it's probably going to be the final accounting expenses to make sure that we've accounted for all the, the other expenses, and then we pay the accountant for, for her work.
Yeah, the audit. And then any remaining assets, where would they go if there were any remaining?
The only thing that's going to be left is cash, and that comes back to the city, and that's, again, that's all part of the Articles of Incorporation for the city, for the corporation when it was done.
Thank you very much.
Council, other questions? All right, seeing none, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on five D? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
I'll call, call item five F through five M together. Item five F through M is approving the interlocal agreement between the city of Lincoln on behalf of Lincoln Fire and Rescue and the city of Waverly, Village of Palmyra, Village of Greenwood, Village of Douglas, Cortland Rural Fire District, Village of Claytonia, Bennett Rural Fire District, and Village of Adams for Advanced Life Support Emergency Service for a term from September first, twenty-twenty-five, through August thirty-first of twenty-thirty-five.
Chiefs. Fire chiefs.
Welcome.
Thank you. Jamie Paugh, special battalion chief of EMS with Lincoln Fire and Rescue.
Can you tell us a little bit about this?
The interlocal agreements?
Yes, thank you.
So for many years, we have provided ALS services to the surrounding fire districts in Lancaster County, and typically, this is an annual renewal, so we see you every year to renew this, and we're moving to an interlocal agreement that allows us to extend that timeline. We plan to continue those services if requested by the rural districts, and the way this is set up is that it allows both parties to terminate the contract, or the agreement, with written notice in thirty days. So although we have extended the term of the agreement, again, it allows both parties to discontinue those services if, if desired.
Council, any questions? Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any member of the public that would like to comment? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
We can now vote on all these items. Item five A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for October sixteenth through October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, introduced by Bekias.
Still moved.
Second.
Second by Duden, discussion. We're waiting for you. I'm stalling. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Duden.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bekias.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item five B is approving the interlocal agreement between the city of Lincoln and the city of Lincoln Lancaster County Railroad Transportation Safety District for funding and administrative responsibilities for the final design services right-of-way construction and engineering services for Thirty-Third Street and Cornhusker Highway Project, introduced by Bekias.
Still moved.
Second.
Second by Duden, discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Duden.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bekias.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item five C is approving the LPA program agreement between the city of Lincoln and the state of Nebraska Department of Transportation for the use of federal funds for final design services right-of-way construction and construction engineering services for the Thirty-Third Street and Cornhusker Highway Project, introduced by Bekias.
Still moved.
Second.
Second by Duden, discussion.
I would like to say something.
Councilwoman Washington.
I know this project has been a long time coming, and this doesn't mean that it's going to be happened tomorrow, but every step forward is a step in the right direction, and there is still time for public, additional public comment and input in the final design, but I am thrilled to see that a long-term generational problem in Lincoln is, you know, a couple steps closer, and to hear the Director say twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight, it almost seems like tomorrow.
That's beginning construction.
I understand.
I think the construction timeline is twenty-thirty-one for completion.
Yeah. But I think I'll be alive to see it, so I'm thrilled.
Moving forward. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Bekias.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item five D is approving Amendment One to Contract Between the City of Lincoln and Spare Labs, Inc. for ADA-compliant, excuse me, paratransit and on-demand scheduling software to add additional scheduling software services, introduced by Bekias.
Still moved.
Second.
Second by Duden, discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Weber.
Yes.
Bekias.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item five E is approving the Articles of Dissolution for the Lincoln Lancaster County EMS Oversight Authority, Inc., introduced by Bekias.
Still moved.
Second.
Second by Duden, discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Schob.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bekias.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item five F is approving the interlocal agreement between the city of Lincoln on behalf of Lincoln Fire and Rescue and the city of Waverly for Advanced Life Support Emergency Service to the city of Waverly for a term from September first, twenty-twenty-five, through August thirty-first of twenty-thirty-five, introduced by Bekias.
Still moved.
Second.
Second by Washington, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Weber.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Bekias.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item five G is approving the interlocal agreement between the city of Lincoln on behalf of Lincoln Fire and Rescue in the village of Palmyra for Advanced Life Support and Emergency Service to the village of Palmyra for a term from September first, twenty-twenty-five, through August thirty-first, twenty-thirty-five, introduced by Bekias.
Still moved.
Second.
Second, Washington, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bekias.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item five H is approving the interlocal agreement between the city of Lincoln on behalf of Lincoln Fire and Rescue in the village of Greenwood for Advanced Life Support and Emergency Service to the village of Greenwood for a term from September first, twenty-twenty-five, through August thirty-first of twenty-thirty-five, introduced by Bekias.
Still moved.
Second.
Second, Washington, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Duden.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bekias.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item five I is approving the interlocal agreement between the city of Lincoln on behalf of Lincoln Fire and Rescue in the village of Douglas for Advanced Life Support Emergency Service to the village of Douglas for a term from September first, twenty-twenty-five, through August thirty-first, twenty-thirty-five, introduced by Bekias.
Still moved.
Second.
Second, Washington, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bekias.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five J is approving the interlocal agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of Lincoln Fire and Rescue in the Cortland Rural Fire District for Advanced Life Support Emergency Service to the Cortland Rural Fire District for a term from September first, two thousand and twenty-five, through August thirty-first of two thousand and thirty-five, introduced by Beccius.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Washington, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Beccius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five K is approving the interlocal agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of Lincoln Fire and Rescue in the Village of Claytonia for advanced life support and emergency service to the Village of Claytonia for a term September first, two thousand and twenty-five, through August thirty-first of two thousand and thirty-five, introduced by Beccius.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Washington, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beccius?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five L is approving the interlocal agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of Lincoln Fire and Rescue in the Bennett Rural Fire District for Advanced Life Support Emergency Service to the Bennett Rural Fire District for a term from September first, two thousand and twenty-five, through August thirty-first of two thousand and thirty-five, introduced by Beccius.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Washington, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beccius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five M is approving the interlocal agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of Lincoln Fire and Rescue in the Village of Adams for Advanced Life Support Emergency Service to the Village of Adams for a term from September first, two thousand and twenty-five, through August thirty-first of two thousand and thirty-five, introduced by Beccius.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Washington, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beccius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. We'll move on to Section Six, Public Hearing Ordinance's Second Reading and Related Resolutions. I'll call item six A. Amending Chapter eight point two zero of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the Lincoln Food Code by amending Sections eight point two zero point zero three zero, eight point two zero point zero seven zero, eight point two zero point zero eight zero, eight point two zero one thirty, and eight point two zero two twenty to be consistent with the state's adoption of the two thousand and twenty-two FDA Food Code.
Welcome.
Thank you, good evening. My name's, my name's Justin Daniel. I supervise the Food Safety Program at the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, which is located at thirty-one thirty-one O Street. Uh, tonight, I'm bringing forward proposed changes to the City of Lincoln Food Code due to the statewide adoption of the two thousand and twenty-two FDA Food Code. So the Nebraska Legislature passed LB two forty-five during the two thousand and twenty-five legislative session, and this bill adopted most of the two thousand and twenty-two FDA Food Code into the Nebraska Pure Food Act. Some notable sections that were added into the act include the statewide requirement now for a person in charge to obtain a nationally accredited food protection manager certification, and a section on preventing contamination from hands, which is also known as uh, no barehand contact with foods that are ready to eat. So, these changes in the state code greatly improve food safety and better protects the public statewide. The Lincoln Food Code already has these requirements, but we're proposing some minor changes to harmonize language and the requirements with the state food code. So as I said, the Lincoln Food Code already requires a person in charge to obtain a nationally accredited food protection manager certification, and then they obtain a locally issued food protection manager permit uh, from the Health Department. The local permit is currently valid for three years, where the national certifications are valid for five years. So what we're proposing is to change code language so that the locally issued food protection manager permit expire on the same date as the national, uh, nationally accredited food protection manager certifications uh, that, that they have. So this change will extend the local food protection manager permits to be valid for up to five years, and this will reduce confusion for local food managers, so all the expiration dates are the same. Another proposed change is to remove Section eight point two zero point zero seven zero titled Preventing Contamination From Hands from the City of Lincoln Food Code. This language is no longer needed in the local code now that the state uh, code has adopted similar language on preventing contamination from hands. So this can now be enforced through the state food code for consistency instead of the local food code. Additional proposed changes um, being brought forward are cleanup language relating to cottage foods and farmers market food products. Requirements for these products are addressed in the Nebraska Pure Food Act. Thus, we're proposing to simply cross-reference the state statutes that regulate these types of foods. These proposed changes were approved by the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department's Food Advisory Committee on October first. They were then approved by our Board of Health on October fourteenth, and um, I also held two public meetings to uh, to inform industry um, of these changes and get their input on these proposed changes. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel, questions?
Making it easy on me tonight, huh?
That's right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
You made it easy on us.
Yeah?
Pardon? You made it easy on us.
Oh, no, thank you for that, thank you.
Plus, we're probably all hungry.
I'm gearing up for Thanksgiving. Start fasting.
Start fasting. No food until Thanksgiving, all right.
All right, appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Sir, any member of the public that would like to comment on this? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
I'll call items six B and six C together. Item six B and C is Annexation two five zero zero nine, application of Southwest Folsom Development LLC to annex approximately nine point eight zero acres, more or less of property journey located at the southeast corner of West Old Cheney Road and Southwest Twelfth Streets, and the related change of zone two five zero two four, application of Southwest Folsom Development LLC to change the zoning designation from AG Agriculture District to Arthur Residential District on approximately nine point eight zero acres, more or less on property journey located at the southeast corner of West Old Cheney and Southwest Twelfth Street.
All right, is the applicant here, or is her staff to present?
I hear you.
There we go. Here is David.
Welcome, Director.
Good evening, David Carey, Director of the Planning and Development Services Department, five 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 South Tenth Street. Uh, on behalf of the applicant, um, kind of just really just straightforward uh, change of zone and annexation for a development that has gotten nearly close to finishing off its phased uh, development. So this is part of the, uh, was part of the consent agenda at Planning Commission was approved, eight zero. Um, it, the property is nearly surrounded by the existing city limits, and it, like I said, it's one of the final areas for development within Southwest Village Heights. And so, uh, with that, um, I basically will say that, uh, the planning staff supports this, um, and it's both a change of zone and an annexation, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer those.
Counsel, any questions? Appreciate it, thank you, Director. All right, Madam Clerk.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify?
Thank you. Sir, any member of the public like to testify on this item? If so, please come forward now, item six C. Seeing none, please proceed, thank you.
Okay, we can move on to Section Seven, Ordinance's Third Reading and Related Resolutions, I'll call item seven A. Amending Title Five of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to licenses and regulations by repealing Chapter five point two six amusement devices in its entirety due to the passage of LB six eighty-five, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Beccius, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beccius?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven B is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section nine point three two point zero two zero, permit for lottery or raffle when required to amend the required permit amount to five, fifteen thousand dollars, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Beccius, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Beccius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. That concludes Section Seven. Section eight is resolutions, first readings are items eight A through eight E. Section nine is first reading and related resolutions are items nine A through nine M, and Section ten is our pending list, items ten A through ten C.
All right. Next up is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the counsel on a matter not on the agenda, not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at the microphone session. Individuals are allowed a total of five minutes to speak regardless of the number of topics. For the month of November, open microphone sessions will be held on November seventeenth and tonight, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment? If so, please come forward now.
Come on up. Good evening, counsel. Uh, my name is Reed Martin, ten fifty North Fifty-second Street. Um, today, I'd like to talk about uh, traffic safety and the traffic culture here in the capital city. Uh, once again, my name is Reed Martin. I am twenty-six years old, and I've lived, and I've called Lincoln home for almost my entire life. I graduated from the university in two thousand and twenty-three with a bachelor's in fine arts, and since then, I have been working to become more engaged in the community that has helped shape who I am. Uh, much of my interest is, in, in the community is attributed to my current job, where I serve as the inventory manager and registrar for the private art collection of Karen and Robert Duncan. I confess that it took me far too long to truly appreciate everything Lincoln has to offer. Our city's design keeps neighborhoods stitched together and not pulled apart, and even as Lincoln grows beyond three hundred thousand residents, it still feels like a constellation of close-caring communities. That enduring sense of connection is not just a feature of our city, is it, it is its heartbeat. Lincoln is known for being friendly, neighborly, and welcoming. Our residents, myself included, take pride in that reputation. Yet, there is one part of daily life where Nebraska nice seems to disappear. That occurs when a lane ends and drivers are expected to merge. In those moments, patience often gives way to frustration and competitive driving. That is why I'm here today. I believe we can change, change this together through clear communication and a wider adoption of the zipper merge. The zipper merge does more than just improve traffic flow, it fosters cooperation, fairness, and consideration on the road, showing that one small thoughtful action can have a big impact for everybody involved. Clear communication at merge points reduces uncertainty, eases stress, and creates a safer, more predictable driving experience for all. Lincoln is already a strong city with excellent public safety, schools, infrastructure, parks, and trails. Our city was recently ranked third most livable state capital city, or state capital in the nation. By embracing a cooperative traffic culture, we can continue building a city that reflects both our shared values and our aspirations for the future. The Department of Transportation already promotes the zipper merge and work zones. Their guidance is straightforward. Drivers are encouraged to use both lanes until the merge point, then alternate one by one like the teeth, like the teeth of a zipper. NDOT, NDOT reports that this approach can reduce traffic backups by up to forty percent and improve safety by minimizing speed differences, sudden lane changes, and aggressive driving. When drivers use the zipper merge consistently, it becomes more than a tool for easing traffic. It transforms chaos into order, frustration into cooperation, and congestion into a smoother, more predictable journey. Fans, commuters, and emergency responders alike all benefit when our roads reflect the same values that define our community off the streets. Promoting the zipper merge in Lincoln would align our city with proven best practices and reinforce a culture of cooperation, fairness, and respect. A local education campaign through signage, social media, or targeted outreach could help shift driver habits over time. This would reduce congestion, improve safety, and cultivate a road culture that mirrors those values. This is our opportunity to start the conversation about how we move through our city with optimism, empathy, and a shared commitment to improvement. By embracing this simple yet powerful change, we can ensure Lincoln remains not only a place where we can live, but a community where we can all thrive together. Thank you. I got some T-shirts if y'all are interested, medium to XL, to XL.
I'll let City Law decide if we get any T-shirts, but um, I just want to thank you for your advocacy for zipper merging. As someone who commutes more than I would like to, um, I really do think it's an issue that needs more attention. I think the, the way we do that is by having these conversations.
I agree.
So, thank you so much for coming down on a Monday night
Yeah.
and advocating for it, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, and I've been the, the crazy guy on the side of the streets with signs that promote.
We gotta keep zipper merging, yes, I appreciate your advocacy.
But yeah, mediums to two X.
If I get a shirt, if I can get a shirt, I'll take one.
Counselor Duden.
I just want to commend you for coming forward because uh, uh, it's all a little bit about attitude, and especially when you get behind the wheel, and uh, you really have to look out for yourself and, at others.
Yeah.
Uh, and uh, I had uh, one constituent that uh, called me up and complained and, and just kept, what do I do? What do I do when I'm stuck in traffic like this? And I said, well, that's a good time to pray.
Yeah.
And uh, and when she thought about it, it kind of calmed her down, she says, you know, I think I'm gonna try that, so.
Yeah. Yeah. It definitely is an attitude thing. I don't know if it's, if it's me getting older, or if it's me realizing that instead of a me, right now attitude, it should be an, uh, us in the future attitude.
You would have been a great traffic director at Nathan Q Street on football.
I just need a co, I, I just need a sign and a megaphone, I like it work.
Very good, very good.
All right, thank you, Reed.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Feel free to stick around.
Yeah, we really do, are checking our ethics. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment? If so, please come forward now. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Andraj Thompson. I waive the um, notion to give away my address and phone number. Hope you're okay with that. Okay. Members of the Lincoln City Council, I would like to raise serious concerns regarding the use of artificial intelligence intelligence in license plate recognition and local track, and location tracking. These citizens tend to operate, operate with, at confidence levels around ninety percent, which means there is a significant margin of error. When mistakes occur, they can lead to innocent individuals being reported to law enforcement. In some cases, this has resulted in police arriving with weapons drawn, issuing loud commands, which can create a traumatic experience that can leave lasting psychological harm. This practice also raises constitutional concerns by relying on private entities to collect and process this data. The government is effectively circumventing the, the protections guaranteed under the Fourth Amendment. Such arrangements function as loopholes to erode the rights of the American citizens. The solution is clear, we must prohibit AI-driven mass surveillance of the public, and we must prevent the use of third-party systems to bypass constitutional safeguards. Without intervention, we risk moving towards a society of constant surveillance similar to what we see in authoritarian states. Furthermore, when rights are violated under current practices, the outcome can, can be a lawsuit that ends in financial settlements paid with taxpayer money. This cycle allows violations to continue unchecked as settlements are treated as, as cost of doing business rather than a deterrent. If or when someone is tragically killed during AI, due to an AI-generated mistake, the likely outcome will be yet another settlement with no meaningful change to the system. I urge this council to act decisively to protect the people of Lincoln and the surrounding metropolitan areas. Must ensure the technology serves our community responsibly without compromising constitutional rights and preemptively treating the public like criminals under the guise of safety. Thank you.
All right, thank you, appreciate it, thanks for coming down. Sir, anyone else from the public like to comment? If so, please come forward now. Welcome.
Welcome, welcome, thank you. Again, my name is Tyrese Howard, domicile in United States of America. I'm here for the reason of talking about the law because um, they have me following policies and procedures and rules and regulation codes and guidelines that are oriented to those are for the corporations and not for the people, because the law is for the people. And uh, my property has been taken by way of the the attorneys, um, I guess acting like judges and um, by, by withholding the law, but I, I would like to read what some of the law is, because the laws are the maxims, because everything else is a policy or procedure and a rule or regulation, but maximum one is uh, he who loses the battlefield first loses. A maximum two would be he who denies agrees. Maximum three would be that which is not rebutted becomes truth. He who claims must prove, that's why I need my evidence or whatnot, because I have to prove uh, that I uh, maximum five is let who be deceived be deceived. I wouldn't, not being, been deceived or whatnot, because I would like to, under the presumption and assumption, letting everyone know that I'm not African-American, nor am I a United States citizen or a resident that's under the jurisdiction of uh, the corporations or of these um, although these false presumptions or whatnot, like um, I'm an American. Uh, my, my father, my dad, and everybody who is, who are indigenous of the land. A foreign, uh, uh, a US citizen is a foreigner or immigrant that comes here by way of reading the Constitution or whatnot, and that's what uh, most of you, all you, I don't know what you guys all claim or whatnot, I don't know if he, that, I don't know what they are or whatnot, but I know that I'm not, but uh, like I said, the silence is of equities and so whatnot, and I would just like to state that um, where there is right, there's a remedy. I whatnot, and um, like I said, they had took my property, as I stated last time I was here or whatnot, meaning if I've been truly wrong, the law must offer uh, a way to fix it. Equity uh, regards of substance is not form, meaning uh, it's what something really is that matters, not just what looked good on paper. Titles uh, do not grant authority. Uh, conduct us is part of the law or whatnot, meaning just because someone wears a badge, a robe, or a title, doesn't mean they automatically have right or power. Uh, what makes the, so I would ask, you know, are you guys acting under, under honor or just hiding behind a title? I whatnot, no, no one's gonna answer that, but uh, but lawful liberty must be available to all, not just uh, the privilege, meaning um, meaning the law is supposed to be for uh, for everyone or whatnot, not just uh, people in power or the people that are connected.